Good afternoon. I'm Mayor Figueroa and I'm calling a regular meeting of the University Place City Council for Monday, June 3rd, 2024 to order. And with that, I would like to have the city clerk do the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Boykin?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Present.
Councilmember McCluskey?
I'm here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Grassi?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wood?
Present.
Mayor Figueroa?
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. With that, will Councilmember McCluskey do the honor of the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes, I will. Everyone, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Item number four, approval of agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Any objection to approving the agenda? No objections, so the motion passes unanimously. First, item number five, we have a presentation. Actually, it's a proclamation that we're going to provide to the Pierce County Transit for Ride Transit Month, and I'm going to go down there. And we have Lauren Alder, Government Relations Administrator for Pierce Transit. Thank you. Hello, Lauren.
Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Oh, get this here. So this month is Ride Transit, and there's a special time for our citizens to observe in our city, in all cities in Pierce County to observe. So thank you for coming out and asking us to do this. It's an honor. So the City of University Place proclamation, whereas City of University Place is served by two transit agencies, Pierce Transit and South Transit, providing service by way of bus, commuter, and/or light rail, shuttle, Pierce Transit, Rideshare, and runner van. And whereas Move Ahead Washington, the transformative legislative transportation package passed in 2022, invested more than $3 billion in transit programs and projects, including the first in the nation Youth Right Free Program, which provides zero cost, fair to all individuals 18 years and younger. And whereas in 2024, Pierce Transit launched the Stream Community Line, providing enhanced peak service between Spanaway and Tacoma Dome Station, and established another runner zone, an on-demand micro-transit service, for a total of six runner zones in Pierce County. And whereas nearly 25% of Washingtonians cannot or do not drive and may rely on public transit. And whereas the city appreciates Pierce Transit's close work with local jurisdictions, city planners, and staff to incorporate local growth patterns into future transit planning to increase transit opportunities for residents. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of University Place do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Ride Transit Month in University Place, proclaimed by the City Council of the City of University Place, Washington, on June 3rd, 2024. Thank you. And you're welcome to have a few comments towards what you're achieving.
Yes. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Council. Appreciate the support. I'm Lauren Adler. I am the Government Relations Administrator at Pierce Transit. Have been in the position for two months, but Pierce County is my home. I'm a third-generation Pierce County resident and engaged very much with the City of University Place when I was a senior advisor for nearly a decade to former Congressman Heck. But, you know, Ride Transit Month is so important, and again, just want to thank you for making it official. In 2023, Pierce Transit provided $6.8 million with an M rides in Pierce County, or in our service area, rather. And to me, that's very reflective that transit is you, transit is me, transit is all of us, and transit is here in our community. And that only exists thanks to municipalities like the City of University Place, you know, showing up and being committed to helping people get where they need to go and utilizing this vital service. So thank you again. We are proud to celebrate Ride Transit Month with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you. And now proceeding to item number six, and that is public comments. So I think there's something coming up on the screen, right? And with that, you'll have an opportunity for those here and/or online to provide public comment to the City Council on any items not appearing on the agenda or on the consent agenda. So anyone, oh, there, we had one sign up, and Chris Saunders, would you please come up? You have three minutes. Give your name, and you have three minutes. When do you start?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Chris Saunders, representing University Place Parks and Recreation.
Excuse me, ma'am, and you can start, restart that. But is the mic on?
It is.
Can you move that up closer to you so they can record you?
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Chris Saunders with University Place Parks and Recreation, and I am honored today to come and announce that the Inclusive Playground is fully funded. And, thank you. We want to take a minute to thank our sponsors: The Ames Family Foundation, Washington State Grant, Ben B. Chaney Foundation, Sunderland Foundation, they're out of Kansas City, Pierce County, Milgard Foundation, David V. and Ida C. McCurchen Charitable Trust, Amazon, Walmart, GMT Transformations, Rotary Club of University Place in Furcrest, Puget Sound Energy, Sunset Bible Church, Amquab Bank, and local donors. The build will begin after the equipment arrives. So the really holdup right now is the equipment order is in, and it has to be, some of the parts have to be built. So when they get here, Jack is dialed in and ready to roll. I expect that the moving of the dirt and so on will start somewhere in July or August, or the fall sometime. It just sort of depends on the order. And the City of University Place, Great Western, and Cal Ripken Senior Foundation will be responsible for the building of the playground. That means I'm done. It has been an honor and a privilege to lead this process and work with the 10 other board members of our board, and the city employees have been fantastic to work with and have made this process go very smoothly. University Place Parks and Recreation Foundation will take a little time off and decide what our next steps are, and we'll be back in August to tell you more. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else present here that would like to provide public comments? None seen. Coming up, I'd like to, city clerk, is anyone online?
No one online, Mayor.
No one online, so at this point, I'm closing the public comments section. 7A through 7E consent agenda, calling for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so move.
Second. Any objection to approving the consent agenda? None. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, and that is a public hearing and council consideration, and it's on Northwest Business District Residential Target Area Amendment. And right now, as first in line is staff report by Kevin Briskie, Community and Economic Development Director.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Kevin Briskie with the Community and Economic Development Department. For council consideration tonight is an ordinance amending Section 4.80.150 relative to expanding the Northeast Business District Residential Target Area for the purposes of the multifamily tax exemption program. The City Council held a study session regarding these, regarding the proposed amendments at their May 5th meeting, and they set, the City Council set the hearing date for tonight at the May 20th meeting.
Any clarification, purpose of clarification from the council? It's a good time. None seen. We'll move on to the public hearing portion of this, and so anyone in the public present that would like to provide a comments regarding this item. I don't see anybody coming up, so with that, I will go with online. Anyone online? None seen. At this point, I'm closing the public hearing. And we'll move on to council consideration. May I have a, calling for a motion for consideration?
I move to pass an ordinance amending Section 4.80.150 of the University Place Municipal Code relative to expanding the Northeast Business District Residential Target Area for the purposes of the multifamily tax exemption program.
Second. Okay, so time for discussion and comments from the council, and I'll just have a raise of hands as those that would like to have any council comments or anything else, so discussion. So Councilmember McCluskey.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Well, can, am I on? Okay, thank you. I met briefly with a developer, and he, in detail, went over all his plans. He has a passion for our city and also the surrounding area that will augment our long-awaited park trail around Morrison and Adriana Hess Wetlands that will be a section of the necklace of trails that we've been aspiring to for probably over 20 years. The, as you know, the, as we move along with our regional growth center corridors, we need to ebb and flow and expand that out so that, in the end, it's all going to be sectioned together as one big puzzle piece linking our town center and the other two Grandview and Marrow's Plaza. So this piece that's happening will be a significant piece to that, and hopefully that will synergize, it is my hope anyway, because the building is, will be beautiful and modern and just setting in with the nice setting that's surrounding it, and so hopefully that will synergize the rest of the area to follow suit with the high quality of design, and especially looking at the building and the amenities that is going to occur, not only for the benefit of our citizens, individual use, as well as the residents that will be living there, will have, creating a path forward and a modeling for other buildings that the city is interested in building and developing around. So I look forward to seeing that building pop up and other developers looking at the surrounding area to hopefully redevelop and synergize that to our vision that we've had implemented when we first implemented our town center project. Thank you.
Councilmember Grassi?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo comments from Councilmember McCluskey. I also have the privilege of meeting with developer on this project, and I just want to say thank you for their hard work and investment into our city, but I'm looking forward to, as Councilmember McCluskey said, a beautiful new project to enhance that area and be a real focal point for the start of 27th. I also am excited for the potential for the local current small business that was there, Willow, to have an opportunity to stay, and I think it's just going to be a highlight for that area. And so I just want to say thank you for your investment in our city. It's significant, and I know that of this developer and their previous projects and what care they do their work, and that it's something that of quality that we want in our city. So I just want to say thank you and looking forward to this. So thank you, staff, too, for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't need to reiterate the comments that have already been made. I think they underscore the benefit to the city. But Kevin, just for the benefit of the folks that are watching, because people do watch, could you just really briefly capitalize the benefit of this program and this project for the city?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll try to be, I'll try to keep it brief, but yeah, the multifamily, the residential target area multifamily tax exemption program was, been a very targeted approach. The city has used it on five different projects, which has encouraged or gave the opportunity to $206 million in private investment into the city. The sites that it's been used on have been sites that have sat vacant, many of them for over 20 years, and have been, kind of, some of them very nuisance properties that have been redeveloped, and they wouldn't have been redeveloped without this program in place. The current project that is being proposed, they are proposing additional design amenities, you know, equivalent to close to $1 million of improvements, and then also a large wetland, on top of that, a large wetland mitigation plan with a trail associated with that as the property backs up to an existing wetland area owned by the city.
Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor Figueroa. Appreciate that. And just a chance to comment on this as well. So, and also, I have had a chance to discuss this with staff and with the development team. And, you know, the, the project, I find they have been able to implement a higher level of development than what we would have required typically in order to be able to access the tax, multifamily tax exemption. Also, one of the things that tends to get lost is the, the fact is they, the city, its citizens, while there's a tax exemption for eight years, the actual outcome is several million more than we would receive in any other situation. And those dollars help our citizens' quality of life and provide services in the community. So certainly we have that benefit. We have a higher standard. We have a wetland that is, a trail that's been added, and we also have the enhanced function of the wetland in the course of development around that. It also gets cleaned up, and it will be functioning in a, in a better environmentally effective way than it currently does today. All those things, in my mind, lead me to wanting to support the project. Thank you.
Before I go to Council, Mayor Protem Wood, I know we have Councilmember Boykin, but I have no way to know if you'd like to comment unless you kind of raise your hand or vocalize. So I'm going to give you an opportunity now. Would you like to comment?
I would, Mr. Mayor, and I'll do that very briefly. Again, the, how the sauce is made, essentially by people taking a look at what council is doing very intentionally, the engagement that happens when a developer has one-on-one conversations such that that is also not missed, what the essence is, that we want to see developers understand about how we keep our community character, just as well as how we continue to raise the bar. I think all those are just important elements, and I don't think that perhaps given enough thoughtfulness from residents and citizens about that whole intentionality being only because of who they are, only being part of our real respect for who they are in our leadership, and then that process really being transparent but very, very intentional to bring about these outcomes. So I just want to underscore, we really do get an opportunity to raise the bar each and every time there's a subsequent project, and we really have set the tone that that's an expectation, and that's because we really do believe in our community character. We certainly believe in the residents and citizens, the quality of life that we're really intentional about bringing about. So thank you for letting me comment, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. My comment will be very quick, because most of them have already been voiced. I just wanted to say that when I spoke with the developer and spoke with staff, it really seemed to me like there was a partnership here, that it wasn't just, you know, I believe that developer truly cares about the community and is trying to do something good for our community, and I appreciate that. So I'm inclined to favor. Thank you.
My comment is that a port, we must all remember that even though the tax abatement, we need to understand for the public and for those that are here, is that the tax abatement is on the residential apartments side only. We do collect tax on the, on the property dirt, as well as the, as the retail that is there, this whole, from the beginning. So I think it's important to, for us to let our citizens know that, and the abatement, or the tax abatement, not only that gives us additional amenities that was presented by staff, but it really gives us a house in stock that would not be here. And as we always battle affordable housing, this is part of making it more affordable just because it keeps the price down on the, on the developers to be able to put it at a price point that is reasonable for this area, and the fact that housing occurs. Without some of these incentives and partnerships, we would be, we would have less housing, meaning apartments, and, and we all know that we don't want our family members to move out because there's not enough housing. As we all know, supply and demand, supply, if you don't, not enough supply, the demand goes up, the prices go up, and vice versa. So it's a balancing act that we, that we look at from a city perspective for our citizens and our community. The one comment I really would like to, for council to and staff to really, we like to, I like to get it and study and understand, is even though the, the extra benefits that we talked about, the trail and, and the wetlands, those are not contractual. There's no contract that says you will do this, as we learned through study sessions. It's always makes me nervous. We have been very fortunate that the, the developers we've worked with, that they have followed through on, on the amenities they said they would do, and staff has been very professional but making sure that they follow up on those things. But I have to remind us, it's not contractual, and I'd like to have, work with the staff at some point in the future, how can we be better at securing what we, for the tax abatement, securing the amenities for our citizens, and make sure that it isn't lost after we vote for this expansion of this map, not this map, but future maps. So that's my last comment, and with that, I'll go one more round before we go for a vote. Councilmember Worthington?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the additional comments there, Mayor. Very good. I would point out, though, that while there isn't a contract relationship for the wetland enhancements, there's a regulatory requirement for the wetland enhancement, and if they're going to build in that area or around that area, they need to bring it up to a, to a higher standard of functioning than it currently has. So there's still, there is a regulatory requirement in place for that, if I remember right, so.
Thank you for that comment. At this point, I will say any more hands, so I'll go for the vote, and we'll, the city clerk, do a roll call.
Councilmember Boykin?
Yes.
Councilmember Worthington?
Yes.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Grassi?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Figueroa?
Aye.
Mayor vote result seven ayes.
Thank you. Okay, so we will go to the next item, number nine, and it's the City Manager and Council Comments and Reports, and we'll start with the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Friday, I had the privilege of signing off on documents for 35th Street Phase Two, the curb gutter sidewalk, bike lane, street lighting project from Bridgeport to Grandview, about $2.5 million, federal grant funding plus city match. That project's going to go out to bid in July. It's been designed in-house by Jack's team in engineering, and that will tie into the segment that is completing this summer, which is 35th Street Phase One from 67th to Bridgeport. So that full corridor within, by this time next year, will, from Grandview all the way to 67th, will be, have completed, will be a complete street, curbs, gutters, sidewalks on both sides of the street. It's, I think it's appropriate that I report on it this evening, because later on this evening, you're going to be talking about the six-year transportation improvement plan, of which that was a component. You can check that off the list. But each time you, the council amends that six-year plan, we do that annually, per, in accordance with PRC rules to do that, to qualify those projects. We no longer have to seek grants for those projects, because the grants have been applied for or received by Jack. This council has awarded bid on the Phase One. You will be awarding bid on Phase Two, knock on wood, that we get a good bid coming in. And bit by bit, we build the pieces of the puzzle of our transportation network, and this, and, and under your, under the tenure of this council, you're able to see real improvements being done, adding more miles of sidewalk to our transportation grid. And I think, Jack, we're, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess here, about 50 miles of sidewalk since incorporation, and it wasn't all and all at once. We keep adding to that, and this council keeps, you know, you know, being presented with the bid awards, and you award the bids, which allow us to provide these amenities to the public. And I'm already seeing, this Phase One is not even complete yet, and I'm already seeing the sidewalks being used, and if you drive down there on any given day, you'll see people walking on the sidewalks, and there'll be many more once it's completed. So it's not a small matter, and you'll, we will be bringing, hopefully, we'll be bringing that bid to use sometime, maybe in August, maybe in September. We'll see what the timing is, but we're going out to bid in July on the Phase Two, and it was a long time in coming, but when you, when you approve the six-year plan, later on, it's the last item on the agenda, you're setting the stage for us to get grants on those other things, segments of road that have not been completed, so that we can ultimately build out the complete grid. We still have a ways to go. We're not going to get it done anytime, get it done all, you know, within the next few years, but we're going to get piece by piece, and the puzzle continues to be filled in. So I just wanted to put that in context for you and not be a laborer, but I'll turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to my right, Councilmember Grassi. We'll go down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I just wanted to say thank you again for Chris Saunders' work on the Inclusive Playground. That is just a feat to have that fully funded, and what a wonderful, how hard so many people have worked. So I know she's left the room, but for those watching, and such a significant win. I had the pleasure of attending the General Assembly Meeting for Puget Sound Regional Council, representing our city there. That was a good time to be with other jurisdictions and do their annual General Assembly Meeting. Also, to our Public Safety Team, Cupcake with a Cop was such a huge success, and it was kudos to our communications team, to our public safety team, and to the team at Greenfer's and those businesses there, and Wanta Cupcake. Thank you for co-hosting. It was a great time for our community to come together with our wonderful team, public safety team, have some sweets, learn how to make cupcakes, and Wanta Cupcake was a great sponsor of that as well. So thank you for, my daughter thoroughly enjoyed it, and I know there are many other children that did as well, and who knew? Our chief was such a great cupcake artist. So there, there you go. Also, the groundbreaking- Also, the groundbreaking that I was able to attend with many of my council colleagues here at Kobayashi down at, for that Chambers Creek Canyon Trail Project. What a wonderful picture of how our jurisdictions can work together with Pierce County and Lakewood and University Place coming together. I love the collaboration, so thank you to the leadership that made that possible. And then, of course, Duck Days this last Sat- Saturday. Thank you to our hard-working staff on Public Works Department, Communications Department, everybody, top to bottom. I don't think there was one person in our team that wasn't working to make that a success. And I think it was record attendance. I, I can't say that for certain, but I believe. And so many new faces. I talked to family after family after family that it was their first time there. And so kudos to our Communications Department for getting the word out, and all of our channels promoting, keeping it just a wonderful event and how it has grown. That is no small task to have that available for our community, have a free event for our community of all ages to come together, local businesses that benefited. I'm just writing, reading some of my notes, multi-generational, just such a wonderful event. I think there are, with great events, there are also room for improvement, and I would love an opportunity, I don't know informally or somehow, that we could have maybe a study session with, with staff, a staff report, and an opportunity for council to just give some feedback in ways that we can improve. As we're growing, and as our city is growing, and as the event is growing, I think there are lots of ways that we can improve, from signage to timeline to the flow of the actual parade itself. And that's such a highlight for our families and for children, and I think that we could do a little better with some of those aspects. But I would love the opportunity to, to give some feedback and hear from staff's feedback as well, because with any event, you know, there's things that went great, and then there's opportunities. So thank you. Thank you for all the hard work. I would like to say that I hope that we can get Candy Debate 2024 under, maybe a little smoothed out for next year, as far as where we can, where we can throw, how we can throw, how we can give those kiddos the expectation that came with the expectation to have some sweets and a sweet surprise that they know come to love and enjoy, how we can follow through with that. So I know that there's plenty of discussion and ways that we can do it, and if I can be of help, I'd love to, but I, I think that would be a great item to work on for next year. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
So before I call on Councilmember Fleming, now, because I know this is a hot subject about next, you know, how do we do the duck parade? Councilmember Worthington emailed myself and Steve this afternoon and about the opportunity for, for council to talk with staff at like three at one time. And so we have a plan to, and you'll be here and you'll be, it just happened late this afternoon, so I know Steve is going to send out an email to the council about this plan and how we're going to meet with staff and share our thoughts about what went right, what went wrong, how can we make it better, safe, and all that. And then they'll take notes. I, I mentioned it, and that we probably should have a comeback, but, you know, they're done, they'll come back to the same group separately and in threes, and, and provide what they're, what they can come up with to make it better and adjustments and so forth. And then we can provide some feedback to, to those, and then we'll be able to move forward with what we, what they can do based on the direction. So that's going to be happening. You'll be seeing an email, so that'll hopefully save some comments about the next round. So Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll save my comments on the Duck Days to the end, but I appreciate what you said on that one. As far as reports out, attended Shape's latest meeting, big thing there is they've adopted their 2024-25 work plan. They also requested a 4% increase in budget that would affect all the members of Shape, which was unanimously rejected by the cities, primarily because they're all tightening their budgets. Apparently, the levy lids in a lot of the cities have failed, and they pointed out that from their estimations that things are going to get a little tighter for cities. So they're kind of holding a cap on, on the Shape budget for the 2025 year. So that's being reworked and more to come on, on that one as we go forward. And they've also requested a staff increase, and again, that was affected by the budget increase, so we may or may not see that staffing increase over there. With that said, they continue to do great, I consider, great work in terms of addressing our housing shortage, especially for affordable housing. You know, I want to echo Councilmember Grassi's comments on the Duck Days, and I appreciate what the mayor has said. You know, for nearly 25 years, this has now become a real mainstay of, of our community. And I was more than impressed by the growth that I saw this, this year, not only in participation of the vendors, but participation of the participants. I think it's the largest crowd I think I've ever seen for Duck Days, certainly overshadowed by the candy issue. I'm glad that Steve or Steve or whichever Steve it is, is engaged in, in working through that issue. I think we need to certainly work collaboratively to find a sol- an equitable solution for that. You know, in all the years we've had it, I don't think I've ever had a single phone call or a single citizen get angry at me until this one. So this was, this was kind of a precedent-setting, setting when it came to that particular issue. So with that said, though, again, kudos for what I thought overall was a great program. And, you know, and to the fire, fire department, you guys just blow it out of the water every year. I mean, it's just always one thing better and better and better, Chief. So was really, really happy to see the engagement of the fire department there, being kind of the center coordinator and the core of that. But thank you for what our firefighters do for our community. So that's all I have to report tonight, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Worthington?
No, I'm not Councilmember Worthington. Now, we look alike.
Maybe. Not that answer.
We both have little hair.
The same barber, maybe. No, thank you, Mayor. Let's see, so a few things to, to touch on, and I'll start with Duck Days, which was just a great event in terms of the turnout. And I know our staff works very hard through all of that. And it, there's a, there's a lot going on. It has had a lot of good growth, and it's, it's neat to see our community and the excitement and, and all that comes with that. I also wanted to thank Chief Sharp with West Pierce Fire and Rescue, and just a great community service partner on, all the time, but on this day particularly, it shines. And we want to, you know, we're literally neighbors here across the street from each other, and we, we act like we're neighbors, too. That's as it should be. Thank you, sir. Thank you and your team. And there were a few other things going on, the trail groundbreaking, which was great to be part of as well, and our partnerships with Lakewood and Pierce County there, and getting that up and rolling as well. On Friday, I think it was, I had asked our city clerk to distribute to council a copy of the AWC draft policy statement. I think I'd mentioned I'm serving on a committee that put that policy statement together, and that's the final draft. At the AWC conference in June, there'll be a chance to vote on that. That will be, that policy statement is sort of a guide to our legislative positions, and so there was a little bit of tweaking here and there in that discussion, and some very intentional language use, which may or may not come across. And so I wanted to share with my colleagues as soon as possible. There's still some opportunity for change. There's going to be some public outreach or membership outreach, I probably should say, by AWC about the policy statement as well, so people have a chance to talk about that. And they'll have some get-togethers in a couple of different venues around the state. And then we'll have some opportunity at the conference to chat about it as well. We do this as an AWC group. It, it's done every two to five years, so it isn't something all the time, it's just occasional. But it was, it's been three or four years since the last time. And so that's the outcome, and if you have some questions, I'd be happy to give you the context of, that I heard in our discussions on those subjects. It's not clear absolute direction, but it is meant to kind of, it is meant to anticipate certain things that can come up. And then just as a small aside, in the legislative matters, sessions underway, you don't really know what's going to happen in a session and what the new hot item will be, and, you know, is it real safety? Is it, we never know. Things happen often while sessions underway that'll grab people's attention and to make an issue a highlight that we haven't anticipated. So, and the, that, this policy statement helps a little bit in those settings, and then also in the AWC legislative staff, there's a default position on many things. If it gets us more money or more authority, we want it. And that's sort of the default position. But this gives a little more context, a little more body about what, what goes on. So anyhow, I found that kind of interesting to experience, and I was glad to have that opportunity. So, thank you, Mayor. That's what I have for tonight. One, one other thing, too. Sorry. Councilmember Fleming, thanks for sharing about, about Shape and hearing about the, the budget and some of the shifts that are going in there. I appreciate that information. Ooh. And I guess having said that, I just remembered one other thing. Sorry about that.
No, go right ahead.
Yeah. Rainier Communications Commission, I should report that all the jurisdictions have ratified the interlocal agreement, so that's now in place. And, and so we've officially changed the, the kind of whatever that new agreement did is done. And then we're beginning to work on a, the subset, the next level of detail as bylaws, and that bylaw group will be starting up fairly soon, and we'll, we'll get things going and rolling with that. But I did not chair the last meeting, I was on vacation, but everybody, it was in great hands with County Councilmember Hitchens as the vice chair, and she got things handled just fine, of course. So, thank you. That's, now I think I am done.
Well, you can always go back and ask. It's good to hear from everybody. Council, I mean, Mayor Protim Edwood?
Thank you, Mayor. So first, Duck Days comments. I'm glad we're going to be looking at that. I won't say more there. But I would like to thank, there were so many community partners that were out, both business and government, just to list the government ones, of course, fire was there. My understanding was better than 1,800 hot dogs made. I don't know what the final count was, but it's quite a few. Pierce County Sheriff's dive team, SWAT team, they were out, EOD, Department of Emergency Management, School District, and of course, all the other business and vendors out there that just helped make the event really a community event. And then, of course, all the people from our city who showed up and attended, it was just awesome. Groundbreaking in, for the Canyon Creek Trail. I just reminded, I hadn't been to Kobayashi in about a year, and walking down the hill and here, listening to the water and the birds and everything, it just really felt like I'd just taken a step completely out of the city. It was just, it was a great place to be in. I'd forgotten. I'm glad I went. Also got the honor of representing the city in a couple of events, first one being the Memorial Day Ceremony on Joint Base Lewis McCord. It was a brief but very moving ceremony. I'm glad I went, and it's good to represent our city there as we're, as they partner with us, I'd like to partner with them. And then along with that, a much less somber event was at the 16th Combat Aviation Brigade Ball on Friday. Also, along with the mayor, we got to represent the city there as well. And that was a great opportunity to share, to, to represent the city there, because they come here and come at our two-hour events all the time as well. So it's, it was good to do. Thank you.
Councilmember Maklaski?
All right, thank you. So you had a little bit of fun at the ball. That's good.
I did.
All right. Well, Duck Days, I'm not going to reiterate what's all been transpired. I'm glad we're going to have a debriefing on that. But to put it in perspective, you know, we may have that little glitch in the beginning. For the most, I would say, all the people there had a great time. All the comments that I heard, you know, the, the different eclectic vendors, the food trucks, the music. He rocked it out of, out of our market square. He was amazing. You know, the fire with all their hot dogs, because you knew the parade was over when you saw that hot dog line extend there and wrap around. They knew where to go, get the, get the, the good food initially before partaking at the food trucks and all the vendors and trucks and things that were, were there. And so that was a very strong and strategic partnership, because it's just sort of capstones the end of the parade. You continue down and get your hot dog, and then you can march along. But I really don't want to wallow so much in, in that first glitch that we definitely need to address, but the reflection of everyone there that I, I talked to and even afterwards, they had a, just a wonderful time. So I want you to take note of that, and we just augment from there. And the amount of people, I don't remember that many people ever at our Duck Days. And the kids are all, some of them are all decked out, they have their candy bags ready, even the adults, you know, I saw them with the duck, the, the duck, what, inner tubes on their heads, and so, and the duck t-shirts were, were out there. So I think they're sort of getting into that spirit of the Duck Days. So I think we, we really branded ourselves, so I'd like to see that continued on. I was also at the Chambers Tray, Trail Groundbreaking, walking down Kobayashi. I remember right when we got that gem and how it's transpired and transcended the trail system, the first bridge, and now we're augmenting the, the second huge phase to that. And, and how, how lovely as the Councilmember, Mayor Protim Wood described it, because when I first walked down into Kobayashi, it was, I was in awe that that even existed down there. And that it's really a foresight of all the elected officials and the staff to look at that property and save it, save it for the salmon habitat and all the funding sources that came together collectively to continue that march, to ensure that that wildlife corridor will remain in perpetuity. Not only animals can use it, but people can use it, too. And learning how to walk within a natural environment and a, and a reserve so that we can protect the creek and allow maybe additional salmon, maybe koho, when the bridge and the, the fish barriers are, are removed. So I, I think with the evolution of time, that's, that's going to be one of, you know, we have several gems in University Place. We always call, you know, certain things gems, but this hopefully will not remain a hidden gem, and more people will go down there and respect it and enjoy it and create a, with more people down there, people will feel safer to use that amenity that we're pouring millions and millions of dollars into. And, and I did read that AWC policy statement. And I think it's, it's quite good. There are a couple of little things in there, but comprehensively, I, you did a lot of work, rolled up your sleeve, and you worked really hard to get certain things nailed and shored up, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. They did the work, but thank you.
My comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Boykin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick remarks. Wanted to affirm again Duck Days for me. It was a first-time opportunity as a council member to be part of Duck Days, and good, bad, or different, there was no way it could be anything other than fantastic for me. The opportunity to see how our community continues to gravitate toward one another, the excitement that they have in anticipation of Duck Days and the celebration of this annual event, the giddiness and in the growing of the crowd that continues to be just a way to let you know you're in the right place at the right time, doing the right thing with the right people. I, I think that's the essence of the city of University Place, and couldn't be more excited about what we get to do next as we continue to intentionally see where improvement could be made and lean into that as we have leaned into the effort in general. And so just excited about that and wanted to underscore that. Also, wanted to really heartfeltly just thank the residents and the citizens that came and shared with me. They were candid about some things that had been unusual. They were just as candid- were just as candid about the excitement of what we got to do, uh, again collectively. So I think that is, uh, the most important thing and I just wanted to make sure that I shared that because it was a unique experience for me, just being in a different, uh, place to understand and sense and experience Duck Days. And, and do want to underscore, uh, secondly, the outstanding work of the ten board members obviously led, led with Chris Saunders and the inclusion, uh, part, uh, I think that is a hallmark, it is going to continuously pay dividends in ways in which, in my view, align very well with our community character and affirms, uh, who we want to be and have our best selves represented in that type of model. So that's all I have and thanks again as always, Mayor, for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Um, I'll start with AWC Conference that's coming up, uh, later on this month, I think most of us are going to attend, I'm excited to, to attend with the rest of our council members that are going, because I, I really feel that this is a time to connect with other jurisdictions, uh, other leaders and not from other jurisdictions. And it's also a time to, uh, potentially, uh, talk to the, with each other, uh, how we feel about our city, uh, about our, ourselves and, and serving. Uh, we don't get a chance other than here, uh, to really meet with each other personally to just, uh, check in. Uh, and so I think this is an opportunity to do that and I look forward to doing that. The Duck Days, uh, I'm telling you, I just came from New York City on vacation and those hot dog stands have no chance, uh, here comes Chief, he stepped out on my comment. Okay, yours doesn't time, Chief Sharp. Yes, so I was just starting my comments and I just came back from New York City on vacation right before Duck Days and I can tell you right now, all these comments about New York City having the best hot dog stands, they have no clue or chance against your, your hot dogs that your department serves, they're the best, thank you. And, uh, and you should go and compete, we should make, make a call and, 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 and ask them to compete against your hot dogs. So that being said, uh, you know, I, I think that we have, not think, I really know that we have tremendously increased the, the population that has come, uh, on the streets of UP for Duck Days, we have extended more people that are actually in the parade, uh, we have more vendors, uh, we have more of everything as far as crowds and everything else. Uh, I think that considering, and this is kind of the first time, I mean, it was just amazing, so I think that, yes, when you have that kind of an increase overall, it's overwhelming, uh, with a limited staff that is assigned to this task. Considering that, considering the, the, the crowd, the excitement, you saw the excitement, I'm literally, this folks were just jumping, trying to just engage, uh, it was almost like a concert, that you have to keep them off the street, you know? And so, yeah, you're gonna have hiccups, I don't care who you are, is, you're gonna have them. Uh, and, uh, but at the end of the day, uh, I left a little bit early because I had other arrangements, but I did stay long enough to, and I walked around enough to hear enough comments, as some of you, uh, indicated and heard, uh, they were happy at the end of the day. They weren't focused that some candy, not enough candy was thrown, they were really just happy campers, they loved what was going on. So I think we need to focus on that. Uh, I think that whether there was hiccups or not, I think when an event like this has grown from a baby to a kind of a regional, some kind of a parade, that we probably should actually look at this closer about, you know, what else can we do, and especially around safety. You know, the candy's one thing, but the other thing, of course, is safety. Uh, and you might have heard, uh, there's been an incident in another city about, in their parade, we certainly consider that news compared to our candy issue, that's like, that's a register on my radar that there's a problem. Uh, I think we did really well and, uh, yes, we do definitely need to work with staff and, 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 and provide feedback or direction if they need it to, uh, how do we better, uh, uh, this community for our visitors, our citizens, our vendors, and everybody else. So, uh, uh, I think overall, I, it was an A plus. The other one is, uh, uh, JBLM, oh, I should say the bridge, the Narrows Bridge issue. And you heard me talk about JBLM and, 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 and how, uh, we're trying to get them to, to be part of the solution. So I won't go to all the details, I just want, huh?
Day Island, right?
Oh, Day Island, oh, I said Narrows. I'm sorry, thank you, that's why there's all these council members who, you know, help me out, thank you, thank you. Um, Day Island Bridge. And so you're very familiar with that? And so here recently, we have been in communication with JBLM on a couple of major fronts about how they would include us in a major study slash analysis slash assessment, uh, and they have agreed to include us, uh, which is huge. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll provide more, this is all as news hot, off the press, and we'll hear, we'll, when all really happens, we'll be sharing that in detail with, with the council. The other one is, uh, and a funding source that installations have, especially like JBLM, it's called, uh, DICP. I can't, don't ask me the acronyms names, but it's some, a special funding that actually goes to certain installations for all kinds of things, which include outside of the base that may interfere with our mission, whether it be a bridge, a, a highway or, or anything else. So it seems that we, uh, that we have some traction with them to look at this closer. We have Mayor, uh, Mayor Protem Edwood and I have a meeting, uh, next week on Monday to, uh, brief them, uh, with staff and, and then do a site tour. Uh, we believe that we have a very good chance, uh, to have the commander sign the letter in support of that, uh, of that, and of the support of the application we will submit for this special funding. That being said, uh, most of you know we, uh, we applied for the FEMA grant, uh, here recently and, and, um, and that's going to be, if I heard staff correctly this morning, around mid-June or later on this month, we will hear from that source, whether, you know, we're in or out. So a lot of that is coming about and so, uh, staff is working really hard in keeping up with all the different players and how we can get that bridge, uh, off the ground. So just wanna let you guys know about that. Uh, and I think that's all I have. Okay, so I'll move on with, uh, item number 10, grants update, and we have Lisa Patorik, Administrative Services Director, to come up.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, Lisa Patorik, Director of Administrative Services. And this evening I wanted to provide a brief grants update, um, since it has been since September of last year, since you received one, and there's been, um, a number of updates since then, uh, that are worthy of discussion. So tonight I'm mainly going to cover three topics in the presentation that will be before you this evening. The first is I will cover, um, a broad overview of the currently awarded grants that the city is managing. Second, we'll cover the recently submitted grants and other upcoming grant opportunities, and this will, um, lead into a discussion that the mayor has referenced in his comments. And then third and lastly, uh, just wanna touch on the city's expanded grant partners, um, through the work that has been done by various council members, um, since 2023 and all the way through 2024, we have expanded our partners in the grants arena, which has been very helpful, um, for our grant application process. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to get into every single project that will be shown on these first two slides, because it is numerous. Um, but just to give you an idea, there are thirty active state and federal grants that the city is overseeing. You can see on the first slide, um, the lead department is engineering for all of the ones on the first slide, because most of the grants that the city has received is related to capital improvement and construction projects. Um, that is where the city receives most of its grant funding. The remaining, uh, grants that you'll see on the second slide, go ahead and move to the next slide, please, um, are sprinkled in with some other grants that are overseen by various departments, um, such as Development Services, um, the Parks Department, Administrative Services, and those grants range from, um, the comprehensive plan updates to, um, the soon-to-be EV charging facilities that will be, um, implemented as soon as the city signs the contract with the state. Um, so the thing that I wanted to point out on this slide is that the grant award total is over thirty-five million dollars for these projects, which is very substantial. Um, and, uh, wanted to let you know that based out of these grants that are on the first two slides, the total project cost amounts are forty-five million dollars and the city's share of that is just under ten million dollars. So that's a pretty good trade-off. Um, all of these grants that are on the first two slides are budgeted, they're in the forecast, um, those that have, uh, completion dates into 2025 and 2026 will be carried over and you'll see, um, those projects carried into the next biennial budget. Um, I did wanna say that, uh, since 2003, um, finance has been able to confirm that the city has received about seventy-eight million, three hundred and twenty-three dollars in grant funding for various projects between 2003 through 2023. Um, if we were to go back to city inception, I'm gonna be a little bit conservative in saying that that amounts upwards of eighty-five million, um, but it very well could be higher. So, uh, I'll be looking into that and determining, you know, what that total grant amount that the city has received since inception. Um, but I think the 2003 to 2023 gives you a good idea of, of what the city has been able to receive. And for the most part, um, for all of the grant projects that have been implemented and completed by the city, um, grants have covered eighty percent of that cost, um, which is, which is very impressive. Um, and it, it really illustrates how, um, the work that's being done by staff and by council really allows the city to, uh, create these projects that otherwise would not be funded, um, and would not be completed. Next slide, please. So next I wanted to cover, um, some of the recently submitted grants, these have been the grants that have been submitted, um, since the first of this year. Um, so through May, um, there have been eight grants submitted with a total grant request of, uh, a little over eight million dollars. The total project cost for these grants is estimated to be about ten point nine million dollars, the city's share would be around two point six. Um, for those that are known, finance has been alerted and, uh, those are being fed into the budget as well. Uh, I wanted to, to mention a couple of key highlights, um, from this slide. Something that the city began pursuing, um, more fervently in 2023 and 2024 were congressionally directed funding requests. Um, those are earmarks that may be requested by members of Congress for very specific projects back in their home states. Um, so I wanted to highlight that the city has been successful in actually having, um, one of their congressionally directed funding requests through Congresswoman Strickland's office awarded through her championship, and that is the Chambers Creek Roundabout Project, um, which would provide a roundabout in that location and provide other, uh, safety, um, uh, safety components to that. Um, so you may have seen that Congresswoman, uh, Strickland posted, um, some information on her socials regarding that, and we linked to that on our socials as well. So we're very thankful for her championship, um, and the work done by, uh, council, um, to work that project through the process. Additionally, this year we also submitted, um, the remaining portion required for that project and very happy to let you know that Congresswoman Strickland again came through for the City of University Place, and that was one of the fifteen projects that she, um, submitted for consideration for the budget. And so that project is now sitting with the, um, uh, I have it here, the House Appropriations Committee, and they'll be vetting the project, and we're hoping that that will pass the committee, get in the House budget, and then survive the Senate side. Um, so we should be hearing more about that a little bit later. But again, very thankful for our, uh, Congresswoman Strickland's support of the City of University For, for the grants that were on the previous slide, we do expect to hear, um, whether these have been successful, uh, by the fall. So we'll have more information available to council at that time. Next slide, please. Since the last time we met on this topic in September, um, there have been some updates in terms of a few grants that we did apply for that were not awarded. So the Day Island Bridge replacement is a project that we've, that staff has consistently been working on with councils since 2023. Um, we did submit a Protect grant last summer and we received word early this year that that grant was not successful. Uh, we do have an opportunity to meet with the Department of Transportation to talk with them about our grant application and learn more about, um, how we can make that grant submission stronger in the future. So staff is working on scheduling that, um, uh, with the Department of Transportation. So hopefully we'll have more answers on what we can do, uh, the next time around. Um, you'll see here that the Corin Orchard Improvement Project, um, did not, uh, was not selected, but the Engineering Department did reapply for that grant in May, so we'll see, um, if we are successful with that moving forward. And then lastly, um, last fall, the city did put in a CDBG grant for Sunset Terrace Park improvements, um, for ADA and parking improvements along with some EV charging stations, that was not successful, so staff will regroup, uh, probably later this fall to determine if that's the project we move forward with under CDBG or if there's another project, um, that could benefit more, um, from those, from those grant dollars. Next slide, please. All right, so we have a couple of grant opportunities coming up fairly quickly, um, the mayor had alluded to one of them, again, another avenue to attempt to make the, uh, Day Island Bridge Replacement Project happen is through a grant, um, through the Department of Defense, which is called DCSIP, so it's the Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program. Um, and as Mayor referenced, um, that grant does require a letter of support from the Commander of JBLM and Commander, uh, I'm sorry, Colonel Park, I'm gonna get my titles correct, um, has agreed to meet with, um, uh, staff and councilmem, I'm sorry, Mayor Figaro and Mayor Protem Wood, um, next week. Um, and so we will be, uh, hopefully receiving that letter of support, um, to turn in with our application materials and that grant is due on June seventeenth. Um, so that's coming up fairly quick, quickly. And then the next item that's on the horizon is, uh, trying to seek funding for the Climate Action Plan, um, whether that's done as a standalone plan or part of, part of the, um, comprehensive plan as a separate element, um, that's still to be determined, but we believe that the Department of Commerce will be providing a notice of funding opportunity, um, for those particular planning, uh, plans early summer of this year, so we'll be looking forward to that. We also expect for other climate-friendly related types of grants to also be released this summer, and so we have some projects in mind, we'll just have to wait and see what those NOFOs say and whether those projects are eligible or not, um, but we'll keep searching those out. The next major timeline for NOFOs to come out, especially from the federal level, will be in the fall. And that's where you, that's where you'll see a lot of, lot of the larger grant amounts, for example, the FEMA brick grant application comes out around that time, as does Protect and some other larger federal grants. So we'll be checking back, uh, around September, October, November, to see what sort of NOFOs are being released along with the amounts and the applicab, uh, the applicability status of those grants. Next slide, please. And then finally, just wanted to touch on the different types of grant partners that the- the city has been working with to receive letters of support, to make phone calls on the city's behalf to various entities. And you can see that we've had success with Senator, Senator Patty Murray's office, who has provided multiple letters of support for various funding projects that we requested in addition to making phone calls to federal agencies on our behalf, seeking grant, seeking to firm up their support of our grant application requests. Of course, we've talked about Congresswoman Strickland's support of the city. In addition to other federal agencies such as the Department of Defense, and then our state representatives and more local agencies like Pageant Regional Council, JBLM, and our smaller partners, University Place School District and West Pierce Fire and Rescue, that have also provided letters of support on our behalf. So, we are very thankful for our partners in the community at whichever level they're at to, to really help support the city in our various project, projects that we've seeked to receive funding on. The other item that I wanted to point out with this was, one of council's goals for 2023 and 2024 was an expansive regional influence, and from a staff perspective, we really feel that the work that has been done by council to connect with these other agencies and talk about the issues that are occurring in University Place and the funding that's needed has really expanded and met that goal. And we are just really thrilled for how impactful those relationships have been when we've been seeking these grants and turning in our applications. It has made a world of difference and, and really strengthened our applications at all levels. So, thank you for the work that you've done in, in contacting those offices. And again, we want to thank you to all of the partners that we've worked with in the past two years because their support has really made a difference. So, that concludes the presentation this evening. Thank you very much.
Before I move on to questions, comments, or whatever, and as I'd like to, just have Ms. Patoric expand a little bit more on some of these grants, for example, this FEMA grant that's in now, and we'll hear about it on this election when, and then, when do we, when can we expect to get the monies and start using them for, for the Day Island Bridge? The other one is, of course, the DCIP. I know that you mentioned you're getting the application here soon, when it's due, and then expand on when it's due and also when this election will be. I think it's important for us council to understand that. And if, if it's elected, when we are required to start. So, things like that will be helpful if you can expand on that.
Sure. So, the FEMA BRIC grant, we applied for, it, it's a long application process. We have to apply through the state first and have them review our materials. If they like the project, then they, they provide some insight, and from that point, they give their stamp of approval, and then we apply at the federal level. So, our initial grant that we applied for two years ago now was not successful. However, we met with federal and state representatives. They informed us on some strategies and methodologies to strengthen the application. And so, we, we turned that in earlier this year, and we expect, expect to hear the results of whether or not the city was successful as early as June, could be as late as August. So, there's a little bit of a timeframe there, but sometime this summer, we expect to hear whether we were successful with that grant. The DCIP grant, which is the most recent grant that we are applying for, is also for the replacement of the Day Island Bridge. The due date for that, as I stated earlier, was June seventeenth of this year, so we're turning that in in about two weeks. We expect to hear whether or not that grant is successful around September of this year. Funding for that would then be eligible beginning September of 2025. And I should state, I forgot to answer the first part of the question regarding the FEMA BRIC grant, when we could expect those funds to be available, and those would be sometime in 2025.
One more comment on that, and that is, on the DCIP application and funding, is up seventy percent of the project cost, correct?
That is correct.
So, whatever that seventy percent, we would have to make up with partners ourselves of the remainder. And it could be, even though it's up to fifteen million, they have a hundred million across the nation to fund, to distribute. So, we could get, you know, what we ask, or we could be six million, and then the rest has to be made up. So, just wanted to give you full disclosure. Thank you. So, with that, any comments or questions? Mayor Pro Tem Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. First, great presentation. This actually was really good information to work with, and also just it represents some really impressive staff work. I'm, I'm still impressed at how much we get done. I mean, managing thirty grants, because it's not like you apply for them, get the money, and everything's done. You have to report back. There's a whole management process to it, and I'm just impressed that we can do all that with, with our staff. So, thank you. And then, one more is just, I am still impressed at the Grandview and Thirty-Six Roundabout Grant Project that was pushed through in just a matter of months based on safety concerns, and I'm, just thank you. I, I, I was very pleased to see that one. Thank you.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Okay, thank you. I concur with Mayor Pro Tem about the roundabout on that. I'm excited to see that for safety factors and also the, the traffic flow will be greatly improved on that one. That's going to be a great addition to that segue down into Chambers. I'm also impressed, you know, of course, the Engineering Department is above par always, but yet, they still raise the bar themselves and continue to impress me and inspire me to encourage them to go forward even more, stronger. As you could see, we are a grant-driven city. Without these grants, we would be not even an eighth of the way into what we're experiencing and enjoying today. So, that to me, gives me goosebumps, and it's also a statement to the staff that has the passion and the desire and the drive, not only to work with the council members to get these things driven on, on the pathways, but just internally, that, that is a whole new city mechanism and machine that is engaged. And I think in the last few years, we, because, you know, we have other competitors now, right? They say, oh, look at UP, look what they've done. You know, we need to follow suit. You know, the, the sidewalks to schools, I think we were the first out the door, and then, five years ago, Tacoma decided to get on board with that, knowing, seeing how that segues into other grant fundings because of connectivity. So, it's not only the grants and the projects, it's how it, and I'll say the word synergize again because I said it before, on the Twenty-seventh Street project. This just synergizes all the other spokes of the wheel into the infrastructure. And once you have the infrastructure there, you encourage development and people using it and increasing the lifestyle and the total enjoyment of the city. So, that's a huge wow. So, thank you.
Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor Figaro. And Lisa, thank you so much for, for the report and also for all the work it took to get us here. It is a team effort for everybody, and Mr. Sugg and you and your team have really put a lot of energy into helping us as a community to get to where we have thirty-five million dollars of external funding to help us get the things that we need to be, to achieve the quality of life our community deserves and wants. And our, the leverage that we receive, we're able to somehow leverage that at seventy percent or better. Having worked in this arena for a while, that's a really good ratio of leveraging. That means, you know, seventy cents for every thirty cents we put in. And that's not a, in my set of experiences, that's not a common achievement. So, but more importantly, we're getting things that matter, that improve safety and that help our community. And it really does take a team effort from the council, to the city manager, to the staff that you lead. So, appreciate that, that all the way around. Thank you for the report.
Anyone else? No? Councilmember Boykin? Any comments?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. I think that, just a few, the other side of these grants, and I know it's not about grants, but I'm telling you, it was mentioned about the work from the beginning to the end, the audits, and it is extreme audits that are, when it comes to federal monies. So, kudos to the finance team to keeping our monies, the books straight. Kudos to Jack and his team for, I don't know how they do it with so many. That's why I've said, get a grant administrator. I've said that, I'll keep saying that. I think that that's a huge amount of work, and that's not just applying for it, all the information, the back and forth, everything else, and, and that's not even counting the actual work. I, I think that we need to appreciate that work, and thank you, the engineering team for that. We also need to recognize some of these federal grants we have, we've, we've been approached with Delta contract and extending that and things like that. I've had the privilege to, to work with them, to see them, see them at work, and for those that have, I think you, hopefully you agree with me, and that is that it's been worth every penny to, to keep us at a, at a level of, of understanding how to play this, I want to say, how to process what we need through the systems. So, I think that, thank you, staff for selecting Delta, and it's a good company that has done well for us. And the last one would be, that was one more thought, and now I don't remember, and I didn't put, write it down. So, I'll finish right there and without any more comments, okay? We'll continue with the next item, which is, get to it, excuse me. I'm getting there. Okay. So, the next item for the study session is a six-year transportation improvement plan for twenty-five, two thousand and thirty by Jack Eklund, Director of Engineering and Capital Projects. Keep in mind that we're hoping, I gave this enough time to, well, from, we're kind of running early a little bit, but you never know when we all of a sudden extend our conversations and discussion. But just keep in mind, if I understand it, Mr. Eklund, there are several of the study sessions on this subject matter, correct?
On, on this one, there'll be just the one and a public hearing after this.
And that's it? Okay. So, I just want to make sure. So, hopefully, we can finish our business by the, by nine o'clock on this. So, with that, Mr. Eklund?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council. Jack Eklund, Director of Public Works, and as you mentioned, I'm here to present for your study our update to our six-year transportation improvement plan. This should look relatively familiar to you. It hasn't been that long ago that we did an update to our 2024 to 2029 plan as preparation for some grant applications. This is the annual update, the full, full-meal deal, so to speak, for the 2025-2030 transportation plan. And just a reminder, the, the city, we're required to, by state law, to adopt and annually update a six-year transportation improvement plan. The main changes you see in the plan before you over what you've seen before is, we have, one project has been removed, the Thirty-Fifth Street Phase One is no longer the list as it will be completed by the time 2025 comes around. So, it's always nice to check a project off the list. Also, we have updated the funding status on two projects. The Grandview Intersection Improvements, that's the Safe Route School Project. We got to do some intersection improvements and lighting upgrade, crosswalk improvements along Grandview, both in conjunction with the Junior High and UP Primary, and even wraparound up Olympic and Fortieth to help out some, some of the crosswalks at the high schools well. And so, the funding status that shows that it's been funded as the last, since the last update, we have funded those ones. And then also, as was mentioned recently, the Chambers Creek, well, actually, the, I think there's two things in there. We have both the funding status for the Thirty-Sixth Street Roundabout has been updated, and then also, the Chambers Creek Roundabout has also been updated because we received additional funding, some, some federal appropriation, five-hundred-thousand dollars of construction funding for the Chambers Creek Road Roundout as well. So, it's, we are always happy to also change those statuses from planning to funded. So, that's always exciting. So, finally, just the reminders is, approval of this six-year plan doesn't commit the city to any financial expenditures. Rather, each project is reviewed individually by the city council in each relevant budget cycle as a component of the capital improvement plan. However, the approval of this plan does create eligibility for the city to apply for various grant opportunities, and many grant sources do require specific projects, if we're applying for them, to be in our six-year transportation improvement plan. In addition, this plan gives an indication to our other jurisdictions and our residents of what our city transportation planning goals and needs are. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions you might have.
Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just a quick clarifying question, which is, Jack, is Project One more important than Project Two, or Project One more important than Project Five?
So, that's an excellent question, and, and the way we do our six-year tip there, not a prioritized list. It's a, it's a list, a general listing of our, of our needs, and ultimately, a lot of times, our priorities come from where we can get the money from. As Councilmember McCluskey mentioned, you know, so many of our capital program is driven by grants, and so, whatever rises to the top is whatever someone's going to give us money to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember McCluskey?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. You mentioned UP Primary. Is that improvements like around Elwood, or is that, okay?
Yeah, so with that project, we're going to be doing a raised intersection at Elwood and Twenty-seventh. So, that's been a, an area of concern to the school district for a lot of speeding vehicles up and down there, and we have a, it's one of the most heavily-used crosswalks associated with one of our primary schools. And so, it'll raise up that whole intersection, creating a big, you know, slowing down vehicles, and, so it'd be a big needed improvement there. And then, also, the, we also do a raised crosswalk at, in front of the Junior High as well as part of that project.
On the, on the Grandview side?
Yeah.
Good. Yeah. All right. And just FYI, in the winter months, that, that area there in front of the, the Junior High going down on Grandview towards the roundabout area, sometimes it's, it's pretty dark.
Yeah.
It's, you know, you could see it, there's lights, you know, and there's a crosswalk there with lights and things, but it's still dark. And these children typically, they wear black and they dart, they sometimes don't use the intersection, they dart across. So, it would be nice to have that area highlighted and also so there's increased visibility. So, even if you're going, you know, five or ten miles an hour down there, you can still have the, the time to, to stop.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent point.
Because they're really fast because they're like a deer just darting across.
Yeah, for sure. And a big element of that, that Safe Routes project, and that was, your exact thing you're talking about was what the school district had been also concerned with is the lighting levels at, at the wintertime. And so, with this project, we're changing all of the lighting out to the newer, high-efficiency and more brighter, how do you say it, brighter, the LED lighting. So, we're not going to have the, the old high-pressure sodium lights or the mismatch of whatever we have out there. They'll all be that brighter light. However, with the LED lights, it also, they're able to direct down, so the lights where it's important on the street and in the walkways, and, and you're not going to add increased glare to the residents, but it will make a huge difference on the lighting level on that street. I'm excited to bring that one. By next winter, we should see it.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Councilmember McGrassy?
Thank you. I'll take McGrassy. We'll take McGrassy. We'll combine our names. This is a, this is-
Like a New York Italian.
Yeah. Yeah, there we go.
Are you picking on me?
No, I'm just affirming. I'm affirming what you were, I like the creativity. Dumb question, but the Twenty-seventh Street project, will some of this be, I assume some of that will be taken care of with the development that's- will be taken care of with the development that's going in, that was just from 27th to Grandview to City Limits, 17, let's see. Page four, Grandview Drive to City Limits, curb, gutter, sidewalk, bicycle lane?
So some will, yeah, that's, so that's the project that's completing. We have sidewalk on that stretch of road on one side of the street, so we still have it on our tip for the other. Yeah, so the development there at the, both the SHAG and the other group there, they would be extending fringe improvements, at least through their property.
Okay. And then farther up, though, 27th, at the new, where Willow is, that newer development, yeah?
Oh, that location is not referenced on this.
Okay.
As far as the public side of things, we've already done the improvements in that stretch. They will be doing some improvements, though, because there are some things that get triggered with the design standards, and so they'll be widening the sidewalks a bit. They also are going to be adding in some parking on the street to help support the commercials, so they will be doing some changes, but it's not reflected in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor Figaro. Jack, it was about a year ago, we had the administrator for the Heritage Christian School in this room, talking about 67th Street and a school, possible school district, not school district, but school speed zone. And I'm not sure if that made the list or not, so is that something that would be on the list if necessary?
We certainly could add, you're correct, we didn't get it added. I don't know that I, at the time, I didn't have a clear direction from council, but I certainly would be happy to add it to the list by the hearing, if that's what council would like to do.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to think if there's a way, at this stage, we can help provide some clarity in that direction, and that's something we wish to do. And I think Heritage is the remaining elementary school in the community that doesn't have a school zone associated with it. I may be wrong, but that's, just quickly.
They will have a...
As a parent that drives that route every day, yeah, it is, yeah.
But there will be, the current project will still, will establish a school zone, and there will be the speed radar signs, so they'll be added there, as part of the current project.
It is part of, is there any reason, then, that you would need this to be there? If, having that project on the TIP, would that provide some aspect of a future improvement associated with that?
It would help us to be able, it'd be similar to the request that was many years ago done by Charles Wright.
Yes.
And we added that to the tip, and then that helped us find funding opportunity, because it is expensive. And so I think if that's something we'd like to do, and it's a long block without a lot of crossings, so I think it would be beneficial.
Yeah, there's no controlled crossing between Circ and Bridgeport, as you know, so...
So it would be, I think it would be a beneficial project, and would merit being on the list, certainly.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, Mayor, I'm not sure the study session is the time, but I would have an interest in trying to move that forward when the time, whatever opportunity there is there, and whether that's from us or from staff, I don't, doesn't matter to me.
Well, let's go ahead and settle with that, and, I mean, think about, let's lay a proposal, whatever, so let's hear from Steve and company, what is the best way for us to move that forward?
We could just add it, right, Jack?
Yeah, I think if we have a consensus from council that's interested, I, by the time of our public hearing, we'll have it added on the list.
So, just a little bit out of order, just to settle this, as you know, my process that I've used is, anyone objects, who objects to having this put on the list, please raise your hand?
I'd like to comment on it before we put it on the list.
Okay, please do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I had two comments, I'm going to get rid of the first one quickly, and then go to the second one. With regards to the lighting, I came in on the tail end, so I apologize, Jack, the lighting that you were referring to, that LED, is that the same lighting you put on Chambers Creek Road?
Yes.
Because that, what a transformation that made. If it's the lighting you're going for, I got two thumbs up with that.
Yeah.
That is very, very nice. Now, with regards to private schools and public funding, for those, you know, when we did the one at Charles Wright, I was all in favor of it, because Charles Wright at the time allowed the public to access their facilities, i.e. their fields, and let the public do their walking and what have you around there, and we did those. And I was, I thought, well, okay, you got a private school, but they're invested in the community, they're supporting the community, and I thought this is a great idea. And as soon as that project got completed, they closed the campus to the public. So now it's private school using public funding for improvements in front of their institution. That really has left kind of a bitter pill in my mouth with regards to partnerships. So, you know, when we start having the thumbs up for private schools, and I'm not picking on my neighbor next to me here, but, because they are open to the public for most of their events, but when we look at public funding on private, for private, I don't know, investments, whatever, I think we just need to be very careful before we jump with both feet on that one. I think if we're going to spend public funds to make those improvements, there has to be some reciprocation back to the city or back to the community to get the benefit out of that. So I'm not a guy who's putting my thumbs up saying, let's jump for this one.
Okay. Okay, so we're back to, it looks like I got, we got enough direction, say, put that on the list, okay? With that remark that we heard from Councilmember Fleming. That being said, before we move on to other comments, I don't have any, I think it's been well discussed, but Councilmember Boykin, I want to give you the opportunity to comment.
I just wanted to say, that was a really excellent point that Councilmember Fleming just reminded us. I'm sure that was not something that was seen by the good intent to ensure that we had a way to provide, again, enhancement for quality of life for residents of City University Place, as well as the expectation of an institution really centered in a way that just made it make sense. So if there's anything else that I would just ask us to consider as part of staff looking at that situation for the future, if there's any way we can not mitigate, but ensure that it can't happen again, and I know it's tricky when you're talking about public and private partnership, but if there's truly a partnership, those types of things really shouldn't happen. So if there's anything that we can do to just really be clear about that, and then put anything in place that makes it make sense as we do move in partnership, I'd be really excited about that, because that continues to be disheartening, it really does.
Before we move on to the next round, I just, remember, I do have one comment, that is, in regards to all this, even though there was some benefits to the private school, I believe that the majority of those that are taking advantage of the improvements next to Charles Wright is that there is a huge neighborhood that needed that for safety, which, you know, again, maybe they were just going to that private school, but it was for the purpose of those, it wasn't Charles Wright that came to us as, do this for us, it came from the community and the neighborhood. So I just want to kind of remember that, and I think that's kind of going to be similar for this, even though, not, just in reverse, the school came to us, not the neighborhood, but we also understand the dynamics of how the neighborhoods in there utilize that school. So, that being said, second round, the first one would be Mayor Protam Wood, and then McCluskey, and then Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor. My only comment in response to this is, and I get the idea of public funding for private benefit, that's an issue, but the kids that cross the street are kids, no matter what school they're going to, so I got no issues with that, and I support putting it on the tip, with the recognition that we'll discuss it as an individual project if we ever can find funding for it. So this is obviously not guaranteeing anything to anybody yet, it's just giving us an opportunity to seek funding. So that concludes my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Mayor Protam, our mayor. When we have people in our city, whether they're citizens or visiting, we need to ensure that they're safe. Those pieces of improvement not only helps the school, which is, you know, we don't want to mix public and private funding, but it is on a public roadway, and even though there is a private school within our jurisdictions, we need to ensure the safety of egress and access as well. I think that is our responsibility to put in that infrastructure for that, just like we do to any other business in University Place. The other note is that, on these stretches of roads, we don't have any other access to cross over. It's long stretches, and it would be really optimal if we could put a safety crosswalk across those busy sections, just like we did in front of Charles Wright, if it's strategically done in front of Heritage, then I think that's a win-win for safety in the present corridor to safely cross over the street there. So I really don't have any heartburn putting this on the tip, because I think it's, in the end, it's going to be a greater public good and public benefit, and the ancillary benefit will be for the Heritage School. Even though it's their request, they noted the issue, and they are the only exception of the schools that really don't have a safety component, and that's been my angst for a little while. Thank you.
Councilmember Worthington?
Thank you, Mayor. So essentially, Mayor Protam Wood and Councilmember McCluskey, I think, made the point that I was looking to, I think I'm still going to add a few more comments to it nonetheless, though, and that is, really, it's about child safety in this particular situation. My property abuts the back of the Heritage Christian School, just as a disclosure issue. Not that I have any direct benefit, nor do I have children that attend the school. Anyhow, the, actually, they did, they'd hop over the fence and go out the back. The, but for everyone else, they need a safe way to be able to get there, and the school has a long history in this community, and I believe it predates the city, I'm not positive that, but I think it does. The fact is, the drop-off process at Heritage may be just a little hectic, and it's going to change when there's sidewalks and a channelized opening, and it's going to be different, and it's going to take a little while. And eventually, these people are going to be crowding, wanting kids, needing to pick up children on both sides of the street because of the constrained areas, is my guess. A crossing could be very, very helpful, and certainly not just helpful, but much, much safer than it would without a controlled crossing. So these things don't happen overnight, as we all know. Chambers, or the Chambers Road crossing was on a fast track, and it was four years. So it's just the nature of what we do, and I think getting it on the list, yeah, I believe we need to be that. It's about safety and not necessarily the partnership relationship, is children getting across the road, and a neighborhood having connectivity that's safe, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so my words are not misconstrued by the council, I want to do some points of clarification. Number one, safety first in our community, there'd be no doubt about that. You know, with regards to the Heritage and the other private schools in our community, they are partners with our community. They do a lot of outreach, and a lot of the students from those schools happen to come from our community. I pointed out Charles Wright because I have, my property abuts that one. Full disclosure. You know? But that is a private school in which the majority of the kids do not come from University Place, and the request was not from the community, it was from the school, that's a point of clarification. So I just want to ensure when we're investing public dollars for private ventures, that there's a partnership, that, you know, that the community is in it together, not just one-sided, so that when you have a school that has extremely affluent people who wants to improve its frontage, it's not done at the expense of the city, and the city gets nothing back. And when I say city, I'm talking about the community, the people that reside there. You know, prior to our engagement with the school and allowing that to happen, that was open to the community, and so there was that partnership, but once those improvements were done, my objection, and from the local people that live around it, was that it became a closed campus, and no longer could University Place people go on the grounds there, so. So that was my point, and that was the only point I was trying to make.
So, that being said...
Mayor? Mayor, my hands raised?
Yes, my apologies. Councilmember Boykin?
No worries. I just wanted to thank, once again, Councilmember Fleming, because that's exactly what I'd hoped was understood. It was never an issue about either or, it was just being really clear that partnerships that are, partnerships really should be partnerships, and private and public homingling, if you will, can be tricky, especially if we're not really clear about the partnership runs all the way through. And so the expectation of where our responsibilities are, particularly when it comes to safety, is unquestionable. We would lean into this process to support just because of it being a safety issue, and I am excited about that, and want to just be really clear about that as well. I've seen other scenarios in different places where that public-private partnership was inferred, and then it absolutely was not what occurred, and I just wanted to be really careful about what we're doing here. But the issues I saw is apples and oranges, it's safety, it's paramount safety is the issue, and it doesn't even compare to even if there was not truly a partnership that came to fruition as a result of what was agreed to, of what was done. So thank you again, Councilmember Fleming, for making that distinction, and that's what I wanted to just make sure I affirmed for council and our residents.
Okay. So I do have one clarification. I must have missed something while I was gone, but did you mention that there is an actual partnership with Heritage to do this? No, so...
That's not, that's not what...
The application went in as a need for safety and so forth, we don't have, Heritage is not participating in helping us do the match or anything, right?
Well, at this point, we don't have an application for the crosswalk.
Right, but they're not participating in the match or anything, right? This is all on us for safety, okay. Just want to make sure. Because we've mentioned partnership way too many times, and I just want to make sure for the listening public that there is no partnership, it was just the awareness that came to us from a private school about the public safety. Okay?
I think to clarify also, on the Charles Wright side of things, there was not a financial participation by Charles Wright either in that situation. There was, I know this might sound overly diplomatic, but both Councilmember Fleming and Mayor Figaro are correct on the recollection, it was initiated by the neighborhood, the effort, and then the neighborhood petitioned the school to also do that request, so they both, the request came from both. But anyways, but there wasn't any formal participation by Charles Wright, other than a, like a letter of support, a request.
Right, right. Okay. Well, what is it that you need from us after this report and discussion, any direction of any kind?
No, I think it's clear, we'll add that as a project, and we'll get an estimated cost on there, and then that would at least open the door if there is a funding opportunity down the road.
Okay. With that, this study session is adjourned.